And we are going to call the May 7th, 2024 Regular Orman Beach City Commission Meeting to Order. We are in commission chambers and I hope you felt welcomed as you came in this evening by our Deputy Fire Chief Nate Cordier and our Utilities Manager Bob Priest, who served as greeters this evening. As I always do, I want to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you. To my right, your left is our Recording Secretary Taylor Lockhart. Next to her is our City Clerk Susan Daederer. Then we have Commissioner from Zone 1 Lori Talland.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome.
Our Commissioner from Zone 2 Travis Sargent.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome.
To my left and your right, Commissioner from Zone 3 Susan Persis.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome.
Our Deputy Mayor and Zone 4 Commissioner Harold Brierley.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome.
City Manager Joyce Shanahan, Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley, City Attorney Randy Hayes, and then way to the left and way to your right, we have our Chiefs, Police Chief Jesse Godfrey and Fire Chief Howard Bailey joining us tonight. For those of you listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington. If you would, at this time, please silence your cell phones and rise for the invocation given tonight by Pastor Floyd Narcisse with the historic New Bethel AME Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Let us pray. God, our Father, Christ, our Redeemer, man, our brother, we thank you tonight, God, for allowing us to be able to come to discuss the business of our city. So, Lord, tonight, we ask that you would touch our city commissioners, one by one by one, from the top of their head to the soles of their very feet. Lord, we ask that you would continue to send your protection around our police departments, our fire departments, and every city person who works in this city. Lord, we need you more than we ever needed you before. So, we calling on your name right now, that to have your way in the best city in Florida, that we can continue to let our light so shine, that we can continue to say we live in Orman Beach, our blessings upon blessings upon blessings. So, continue to shine bright on tonight and help us to make the right decisions, no matter what affiliation we may be a part of. Help it to be a part, let it be the right decision for this city to be better and better, for we believe that the best is still yet to come. In this we ask, in Jesus' name we pray, for no weapon formed against us shall prosper. In Jesus' name we pray, amen, amen, and amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Presentations and proclamations, and if Mr. Ike Leary would join me up at the front. This is for you. If you don't know Ike, you're missing out. He is an incredible individual who does so much for our city. If you ever go boating, you ever go fishing here at the gardens and you go to Ike's bait and tackle, you will see his smiling face. Sometimes you'll see him out on the dock. Sometimes you'll see him cleaning the restroom. Sometimes you'll see him in the parking lot giving directions or answering questions. He is an ambassador for the city of Orman Beach, and so today it's my honor to present this proclamation to him. It says, whereas since 1999, it sounds like five years to me, yep, Ike Leary has been the proud owner and operator of the Granada Pier Bait and Tackle Shop, a place that has provided countless unforgettable experiences for locals and visitors. Ike goes above and beyond to ensure every person who visits the Granada Pier has a remarkable experience. And whereas his commitment to providing excellent customer service has made him a familiar face and trusted friend, you can often find him walking the pier day and night, talking to anglers, offering fishing tips, and even providing first aid when needed, ensuring all who visit the pier have a memorable experience. And whereas one of the highlights of Ike's contributions to the community is his Orman Beach Reel in the Fun Fishing Tournament for Children hosted three times a year. This event brings families together for a day filled with fishing, fun, and camaraderie. Ike generously sponsors this event, providing hot dog lunches and prizes, creating lasting memories for many Orman Beach families. And whereas Ike's outstanding service and dedication to the city does not go unnoticed, since 2017, he has been an appointed goodwill ambassador, and in 2019, the city commission designated the southern leg of the pier as the Ike Leary Fishing Pier, a testament to the admiration he has garnered. And whereas the recognition of Ike Leary's 25th anniversary at the Granada Pier Bait and Tackle Shop presents an opportunity to celebrate his incredible impact on the community. Now, therefore, based on all of that, I, Bill Partington, on behalf of our entire commission, do hereby proclaim May 7th, 2024, as a day to celebrate Ike Leary, and urge all residents to join in expressing appreciation for his unwavering commitment to making Orman Beach a better place. Congratulations. All right. Presentations and proclamations, and if Mr. Ike Leary would join me up at This is for you. If you don't know Ike, you're missing out. He is an incredible individual who does so much for our city. If you ever go boating, you ever go fishing here at the gardens and you go to Ike's bait and tackle, you will see his smiling face. Sometimes you'll see him out on the dock. Sometimes you'll see him cleaning the restroom. Sometimes you'll see him in the parking lot giving directions or answering questions. He is an ambassador for the city of Orman Beach, and so today it's my honor to present this proclamation to him. It says, whereas since 1999, it sounds like five years to me, yep, Ike Leary has been the proud owner and operator of the Granada Pier Bait and Tackle Shop, a place that has provided countless unforgettable experiences for locals and visitors. Ike goes above and beyond to ensure every person who visits the Granada Pier has a remarkable experience. And whereas his commitment to providing excellent customer service has made him a familiar face and trusted friend, you can often find him walking the pier day and night, talking to anglers, offering fishing tips, and even providing first aid when needed, ensuring all who visit the pier have a memorable experience. And whereas one of the highlights of Ike's contributions to the community is his Orman Beach Reel in the Fun Fishing Tournament for Children hosted three times a year. This event brings families together for a day filled with fishing, fun, and camaraderie. Ike generously sponsors this event, providing hot dog lunches and prizes, creating lasting memories for many Orman Beach families. And whereas Ike's outstanding service and dedication to the city does not go unnoticed, since 2017, he has been an appointed goodwill ambassador, and in 2019, the city commission designated the southern leg of the pier as the Ike Leary Fishing Pier, a testament to the admiration he has garnered. And whereas the recognition of Ike Leary's 25th anniversary at the Granada Pier Bait and Tackle Shop presents an opportunity to celebrate his incredible impact on the community. Now, therefore, based on all of that, I, Bill Partington, on behalf of our entire commission, do hereby proclaim May 7th, 2024, as the kickoff of Kiwanis Reads 2024 in the city of Orman Beach, and urge all residents to promote ongoing literacy support for elementary-age schoolchildren. Congratulations. You want me to hand it over?
He's the only one trusting the mic in my hand. I would like to express our gratitude to you, Mr. Mayor and the city of Orman Beach, for maintaining the sacred fire in our gut to keep literacy in the children and the reading for a lifetime to life. And I will also express great appreciation and gratitude to our Kiwanis members and especially the leader of the Orman Beach Elementary School and her great team with the Orman Beach Elementary. And they are on the ground in maintaining that sacred fire, and I am very grateful to have, to work with you and to have met you. So, if I can have a little bit of an intro down the line, start with my co-conspirator Dylan Kelkers.
Thank you, Alan. Yes, thanks again, and thank you, Commissioner Howard, for eating so much downtown and driving all those donations to the schools.
Someone's got to do it.
I kept seeing Harold, Harold, Harold. I'm like, he's rocking it.
You've got to keep your comments.
I saw your name on there a couple times. Yeah, so, you know, we started this five years ago, and you heard in the proclamation that Kiwanis has over 6,000 clubs, 50-plus countries worldwide, and every year we have a signature project contest, and our little Orman Beach Club won the gold contest, meaning we had the number-one signature project in the entire world the first time we did this project. So, that was five years ago. You want to hold that? Okay. And like I said, we can't take all the credit for the great things happening in Orman Beach Elementary School, but we'd like to think that we're doing a little bit. So, I'm so happy to have Ashley Cowan here, who was past Teacher of the Year and also a member of our club. And I asked Principal Hay to come just to talk a little bit about some of the great advances, you know, not just in reading, but everything that's happening in our little downtown Orman Beach Elementary School, because without your team, you know, driving it, you know, can't be done. So, if you wouldn't mind, I'd love for her to tell you a little bit about the great things happening in our local school.
Good evening. As you know, the city and, I mean, you guys come over on your lunch break and read with our students. I see many of you. You really support our school, and in the last five years, we have made it to, this year, we have been announced by the state of Florida as a student of a school of excellence, and we've also been rewarded a Exceeding Expectation Award for Title I Schools. We're in the top ones percentile in the entire state of Florida. So, we contribute that to you guys and all the citizens of Orman who have contributed to our program. So, thank you so much.
We're going to get a picture. Congratulations. Let's move down a little bit.
Hey, look what we're doing for you.
Everybody's on the shirt.
We're going to haul them up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
Last but not least, Chief Godfrey, National Police Week and/or whoever. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers' Memorial Day, and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week, honoring America's law enforcement community. And whereas National Police Week is a collaborative effort of many organizations such as the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund, which produces the annual candlelight vigil, the Fraternal Order of Police and Fraternal Order of Police Auxiliary, which organizes the Police Officers Memorial Day service at the U.S. Capitol, and Concerns of Police Survivors, which holds the National Police Survivors Conference. Whereas the Police Unity Tour, initiated in 1997 by New Jersey Police Officer Patrick Montour, is an annual 200-mile bike ride, starting in Virginia and ending at the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C. Officer Montour's vision was to raise funds and awareness for fallen officers, ensuring their sacrifice is never forgotten. From its humble beginnings with 18 riders from New Jersey, the tour has grown into nine chapters consisting of nearly 2,600 members nationwide who make the trip annually. Whereas the City of Orman Beach Police Department will participate once more in the Police Unity Tour, making it their eighth year, with funds raised being donated to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund. And whereas recognizing the significance of citizen awareness, it is important for citizens to understand the essential roles and risks of law enforcement, while officers uphold their duty to protect and serve, safeguarding life, property, and justice for all. Now, therefore, I, Bill Partington, Mayor of the City of Orman Beach, on behalf of the entire commission, do hereby proclaim May 12th through 18th, 2024, as National Police Week in the city of Orman Beach, and invite all residents to join in honoring the courageous men and women of local, state, federal, and tribal law enforcement agencies. We pay tribute to those who made the ultimate sacrifice in defense of freedom. Thank you very much, Chief. They're keeping me straight today. Now, we have some excitement with the awards for the Mayor's Health and Fitness Challenge winners. This is the time tonight where we present the winners of the 2024 Mayor's Health and Fitness Challenge. The city of Orman Beach has challenged our employees and residents since 2013. The mayor's challenge is a public-private partnership to bring the community together to improve the health of Orman Beach residents and staff. And I'd like to take just a moment to thank our sponsors. This program could not function without them. Our champion sponsors Advent Health, Brown &amp; Brown, and Florida Healthcare Plans. Do we have any of the representatives? Probably not, but still, we want to recognize them anyway. Our gold sponsor is Halifax Health. Silver sponsors, New Journey Chiropractic and Shell Realty. Many of these sponsors have been with us for years. And then our bronze sponsors, Anytime Fitness and Coach Rachel Goops are in Bethel. And now, to the challengers and the winners, I want to thank all the challengers for their participation and call the winners up. And if you would, just stay up here with me. We're going to get a picture with the commission. First of all, in the 17 and under age category, Eric Ross. Next, we jump to the 30 to 39 category, Philippe Manolas. And then Noel Eaton. The next age group, should I say the numbers?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm already here at the exact age.
Me, too.
Forty to 49, we have Commissioner Travis Sargent. And Marcella Miller. Fifty to 59, Phil Rose. Sixty to 69, Jeff Massey. And then, this name's familiar, 70 to 79, Bill Partington, Sr. Congratulations, everybody. Let's have one big round of applause. Volusia County Councilman Troy Kent. Take it when you can get it. Troy Kent, 130 Magnolia Drive, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, Ms. Shanahan, Mr. Hayes. I love Volusia County, but it's always great to be home in Orman Beach. And a couple of things, what a great night to come to this meeting. I mean, to see the Mayor's Health and Fitness Challenge, to see Commissioner Sargent representing, to see Bill Partington, Sr. representing, to see our Chief of Police with National Police Week, and then we have Kiwanis Reads with Alan Burton, who, you know, without him, we don't have Regrow the Loop. And then, last but not least, my favorite, Ike Leary, who you all, you know, appropriately give a proclamation to tonight. What a great night for Orman. Two things I want to share with you, Commission. One is, I love the speed tables because it's making people drive safer. A recommendation on the two on Riverside Drive. There's two of them there because of all the crashes into Fleuhart. The white markings on the black product needs repainted. At night, they are very difficult to see. I live around the corner, and sometimes they sneak up on me. You all have a flashing light to let motorists know there is a curve coming up. I would recommend a flashing light at the location of the first one and at the location of the second one, because, like I said, they sneak up on me, and I can just imagine the people that hit that. For my last minute and a half, I would like to give you all an update on the dog-friendly section of the beach in Volusia County. And I do that because, you know, when there's negativity out there, I want to make sure you hear both sides of the story, because people can say whatever they want, and some people become 10 feet tall behind a computer screen and write things that are wildly inappropriate and not accurate. So, I just want to share some real facts with you, okay? Our program is six months into an 18-month pilot. In my opinion, it has been wildly successful. But don't just listen to my words. Listen to the data and facts that I have for you. The past four months, because we have staff that's there 40 hours a week, seven days a week at the hotspots of the day, they have registered or counted 6,223 dogs. During that time, there have been 204 warnings about, hey, your dog's off-leash. That's 3%, by the way, 3%. There have been two warnings about, hey, your dog used the restroom and didn't pick it up. 100% compliance, 100%. People want this to work, and I refuse to let a few that think they deserve to have a private beach in Orman Beach. It's not a private beach. It's for everybody, for all of us to enjoy. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Next is Debbie Cruck-Forrester.
Good evening and thank you, Debbie Cruck-Forrester. I'm just here to let you know that our Group Warm and Strong will hold its eighth annual J.G. Martin Military Veteran First Responder Family Appreciation Day at our new location, the Orman Memorial Art and Gardens, which was founded by World War I, World War II veterans. It will be held Saturday, June 1st, 10:00 a.m. We're shortening it up because our guys and girls are getting a little older and slower, so we're just making it short, 10:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. Our master of ceremonies will be Colonel Bancroft McKintrick. He's a Marine, retired Colonel. And also, we'll have live music by Randy McDonald, food, art, resources, and fun for everyone. Every military veteran first responder will be honored with a service medallion and a good time. I'd like to thank you for all you do, and I'd like to say thank you for Chief Godfrey. We had a great time this weekend. He did an amazing job with his event that he had. Thank you so much, and God bless you. Warm and strong out.
Thank you, Debbie. Good deal. All right, Commission, that is all the cards I have for audience remarks. Moving to the approval of the April 16th, 2024 Regular City Commission Meeting minutes. They've been sent to the commission for review, also posted to the city's website. Any additions, deletions, or corrections?
I move approval of the minutes from April 16th, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, and we'll show those passing unanimously. Next up is the consent agenda. Does any member wish to pull any item off of the consent agenda? Deputy Mayor Brierley.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull items 7D and E.
D, E. Anyone else? Commissioner Talland.
7J.
So, I need a motion to approve absent D, E, and J.
I move approval of the consent agenda minus D, E, and J.
Second.
Second.
Please call the vote.
Commissioner Talland.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And we will go to 7D.
Resolution Number 2024-68, a resolution authorizing the execution of a public transportation grant agreement between the city and the Florida Department of Transportation regarding funding for infrastructure improvements at the Orman Beach Municipal Airport, authorizing the execution of all documents necessary and incidental thereto for the city to accept the grant award and setting forth an effective date. This is Resolution Number 2024-68, read by title only.
Thank you. And Deputy Mayor Brierley, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just bring this up. Mr. Mayor, I'm 110% in support of this road. My concern is, though, that this road goes from the municipal airport out to Pineland Trail, and if you've ever taken a ride out of Pineland Trail, that road, that road needs a lot of help. In learning tonight as well, we may even have an EOC police facility out there on Pineland Road that just gives me a little bit more concern. agenda. Does any member wish to pull any item off of the consent agenda? Deputy Mayor Bryley.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull items seven D and E.
Anyone else? Commissioner Talland.
Seven J.
So I need a motion to approve absent D, E, and J.
I move approval of the consent agenda minus D, E, and J.
Second.
Please call the vote.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And we will go to seven D.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-four dash sixty-eight, a resolution authorizing the execution of a public transportation grant agreement between the city and the Florida Department of Transportation regarding funding for infrastructure improvements at the Ormond Beach Municipal Airport, authorizing the execution of all documents necessary and incidental thereto for the city to accept the grant award and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number two thousand twenty-four dash sixty-eight, read by title only.
Thank you. And Deputy Mayor Bryley, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just bring this up, Mr. Mayor, I'm one hundred and ten percent in support of this road. My concern is, though, that this road goes from the municipal airport out to Pineland Trail. And if you've ever taken a ride out of Pineland Trail, that road, that road needs a lot of help. In learning tonight as well, we may even have an EOC police facility out there on Pineland Road that just gives me a little bit more concern. That road in its entirety, that road was, we took that road, the maintenance of that road over from Volusia County. And years ago, that was a dirt road. The county had a dirt road reduction program. They actually made it a slag road, which was kind of the cheap way of trying to pave something. It's almost like a tar and gravel-type roadway. It has been paved since, but if you go out that road, you see obliterated pavement markings. There's no street lighting. Some of the signs are probably on their last leg as far as being outdated. And if you look at the edge of the road, in many areas, there's major drop-offs and asphalt crumbling. So I'm not really in favor of putting more traffic on a roadway that's already, you know, it's old, it's tired, it's not necessarily safe in its current condition as far as maybe markings and drop-offs. I would be in favor of this if Pineland were improved. You know, at the very least, it probably needs to be recapped with new pavement markings, that type of thing. But what I don't want to do is become like, you know, if we put another access road out to this road with more traffic, we're creating more of a burden on the infrastructure. And I just don't want to be like some of our potential neighboring cities with, you know, putting the cart before the horse where we have, you know, development without the proper infrastructure in place. So that's my concern, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. And the reason I pulled D and E, I think they're kind of related.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Commissioner Sargent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My comments are for D, seven D and E. Question for staff is, would the city be taking the two hundred and eleven thousand dollars out of the general fund, and then at the end of the project, be getting the, after we submit our receipts, get the hundred and five thousand back?
Good evening, Brian Radamacher, Director of Economic Development. To answer the question on the grant, it's a Department of Transportation Economic Development fifty-fifty grant, so the city provides fifty percent of the two eleven, and the DOT provides us fifty percent of the two eleven.
That's all I have for staff, I think, for now. I just, I'm having a hard time adding additional debt to an airport fund. That's one point five million in the negative right now. On the Zev Cohen portion of this work authorization, I was just wondering if the age of study that we just approved to get done has some surveying of trees and some other things. I was wondering if, once that's completed, if they could use that data, which could possibly offset the forty-three thousand five hundred for that work authorization with Zev Cohen. I don't know if that's something that... Okay. And then I'd like to just reference, I'd like to reference at two thousand fifteen, October sixth, two thousand fifteen, airport master plan update workshop that happened. Just a couple of things in here. Mayor Kelly noted the lack of restroom facilities at the airport. He stated the facilities were pretty much the same as they were in the eighties. He also stated, Mayor Kelly stated that he did not care if the airport made a tremendous amount of money, and noted that he was happy that it is no longer being supported by the general fund dollars. This was in two thousand fifteen, though. He noted that the desire was for the airport to cover its cost. Commissioner Bohm asked if the airport was making money at the moment, and he noted that, he read, it was a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in debt. Mayor Kelly stated that the debt was once four hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred and fifty thousand in debt. This was in two thousand fifteen, Mr. Mayor. And here we are at one point five million roughly in debt on this airport, and we're going to add an additional two hundred, well, hundred and eleven thousand. I would like to pause this for about six months. We have time on this grant. It doesn't have to be completed until two thousand twenty-seven, I believe. I'd like us to explore options of how we're going to pay down this debt before we add additional debt. Currently, the city receives revenues of a nickel for each gallon of fuel that is delivered to the airport. Our Ormond Beach Airport, the fuel cost, I looked at several airports of its size around the area, and we're about thirty to forty cents higher than anyone else. There are other municipalities in the area, they're receiving about eight to ten cents a gallon. I know the national average is supposedly five cents, but in my research around the area, it was eight to ten cents per gallon. I just think that I'd like to pause both D and E until we can get further information of how these are gonna, how we're going to pay for this. I just, I'm having a hard time with it. And let me just review one more thing. I had one more comment on that. Yeah, I just think a six-month pause would help us to, hopefully, the advisory board can come back to us and advise us on better conditions. I know people that fly in out of the airport, that the conditions are, their pilots don't even have a place to go, and they're flying into business. This is a crown jewel of ours for economic driving, and I think we're lacking there, and I just don't want to incur any more debt. And I know that on this, on the item, it says, for the citizens' impact, this project supports the city's goal to make the airport self-supporting by promoting growth and economic development at the airport. I'm just not seeing it right now to how we're going to pay this back, so I'm a no on D and E until we can better identify how we can pay down this debt. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. City Manager.
I just would like to point out that with the golf course going under, we would receive about a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year, each year. So that's not been there for at least five years, and that's in part why you don't have the revenue that you once had. I'm not a hundred percent sure of the deadline for the grant, so if you all want to table this until the next meeting, it'll give staff a chance to address some of those concerns.
Paul, comment on it, Mr. Mayor.
I think it was a year-long project was the timeframe on this. It was, it has to be completed by two thousand seven. If we started it May of twenty-four, it would be done in April twenty-five, so that's about a year long on the project, so I think we have plenty of time.
I just don't know about the state grant and how that reimbursement is...
That's what the state, the paperwork said from the grant.
Okay, I have to check that. I appreciate what you said.
It had to be done by two thousand seven. I think we have, two thousand twenty-seven, I think we have plenty of time, and we don't need to rush this. Thank you.
Commissioner Talland.
I just have a question. It would be probably for Brian or whatever, and Commissioner Bryley is correct. That road, I remember, has, had had issues with the shoulder and things like that in the past. Was that any part of, I don't know where Brian is. Oh, there you are. Hey. Was that, was that a thought process with this road feeding onto Pineland Trail? Was that a concern at all at this point?
It did not come up as a concern. I don't know...
Because it is county, correct?
No, it's the city road.
It's city maintained?
It's a city, we took that over, I don't know, maybe ten, twelve years ago, and we took it over from the county, but we did not annex any of the property into the city.
Okay.
We just took over the roadway.
Okay. So at this point, that was not really much of a consideration. You were just looking at the road to stimulate economic development in the airport business park? Or the airport?
In the airport business park. So the road would go from West Tower Circle out to Pineland Trail.
Yeah.
That allows for the secondary ingress and egress to the business park, which has full support of the businesses in the park. And then that roadway opens up fifteen acres of land which is available for...
For use.
For use by businesses that are looking to expand or locate in the park, and that would generate revenue, which then would go back into the airport fund.
Right. And I hear what Commissioner Sargent is saying about the debt of the airport and all that, and I think that's a whole nother topic that should have, is valid. I live off Airport Road, and at certain times, you just see all the traffic going in and out. And I think, you know, having, having another access road is a good thing. Timing, I'm comfortable with holding off if you all would like to, to get a little bit more research on the road and all. But I do think that that road's a very important road to move forward.
Yeah, I kind of don't feel like a next meeting update, or if it's ready to come back, would be a bad thing. Certainly, I don't really think Pineland is a terrible road. I mean, I'm up and down that a fair amount. I see a ton of cars on that road. I mean, they burn it up getting to the sports complex from west of town. If it was a problem, I thought we would have heard about it by now from somebody. But, you know, there's not a lot of potholes. It's a travelable road, and people do it thousands of times a day. So from that perspective, I don't really see an issue with it. But if it's, you know, between now and the next meeting, if staff can program some improvements into the CIP that would give Deputy Mayor Bryley a little better comfort level, and then work on Commissioner Sargent's concerns, overall concern about the airport fund, and then maybe help tie up a little better how opening up this area will potentially generate revenue, would just be, have a better comfort level with it. I think that might be a good compromise.
And, Mr. Mayor, I am a hundred percent for this project going through. I'm just, it's the funding part of it that I'm, I think it's needed. I think it's warranted for the development of the airport business park. But I'm just troubled adding more debt. That's not, we're not paying down. And I know that the golf course, but if you lose revenue, then you don't just keep adding debt. I think that's where we need to figure it out. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Bryley.
And, Mr. Mayor, as I said before, I'm a hundred and ten percent in support of the road. I think it's needed. But again, that road, I was out there today, and that road has got a lot of drop-offs, bad drop-offs. It's got some areas where the shoulders give away. And quite frankly, didn't we take this road in for Ormond Crossings?
I don't want to say that I've seen how you drive. I was out there today, too. I had no problem. It worked fine.
Well, no, it works fine. But I mean, if, you know, if you just veer, if you just off the side of the road, I mean, someone could overcorrect. I mean, there's been fatalities out there. That road's, I worked for the county for twenty-one years, and it was never a great road in twenty-one years, so.
I could tell some stories.
We got a bad deal from the county on that road.
Yeah. But I think, now, my question, though, I think on the Ormond Crossings deal was, was there money programmed in there from Ormond Crossings to help rehabilitate that road?
I don't think so. Joyce doesn't know. Sean said no.
Commissioner Talland? Okay. Commissioner Persis.
And Ms. Shanahan, the money you said that we're going to be getting recurring, would that be a possibility used to pay back? Didn't you say? I'm sorry. The money you said that we were going to start getting, you just said a few minutes ago, a hundred and twenty-five from the golf course. Okay, so that could possibly be something for the airport. Okay, that's all I wanted to ask. Thank you.
All right. So is there a motion, I guess is the question, on seven D? I don't know if we can continue both or table both? We're not to J yet.
I move, Mr. Mayor, we table item seven D.
Can we do both at the same time, Randy?
Well, you have to read the title to the resolution, so you need to do that separately.
Okay. Let's, let's read seven D by title only.
I read D already. I read the title.
I moved to table for the next meeting.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, well, let's do it. We'll do a roll call vote on that.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, seven E.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-four dash sixty-nine, a resolution accepting a proposal from Zev Cohen and Associates, Inc., to provide engineering design services regarding the airport access infrastructure improvements project, authorizing the execution of a work authorization thereto, and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number two thousand twenty-four dash sixty-nine, read by title only.
And we will start with Commissioner Sargent on that one.
I made all my comments under the D, Mr. Mayor, so I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. You're still looking for a continuance on that one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Someone want to move to table, or?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, seven J.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-four dash seventy-four, a resolution approving the settlement of personal injury claims filed by Temperance Thomas, authorizing the execution of all papers necessary and incidental thereto, and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number two thousand twenty-four dash seventy-four, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards. I just need a motion and a second for discussion.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, and Commissioner Talland.
Yep. And I pulled this because I had a question for Randy. I just want a clarification. So this gentleman cannot come back later with additional claims to the city if we approve this at this point, correct?
That's correct.
All right. And I just needed that clarification, so thank you so much. I'm fine.
All right. Any other questions or discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And that would be the appropriate time if any member of the Commission wants to comment on any consent agenda items. And we'll start with Commissioner Persis.
Okay. Oh, yes. I wanted to make a comment on item seven, oh, about the public art displays. And I'm very, very excited because this is a unique public art experience. It encourages visitors and residents to visit our area, explore our district while viewing the art pieces. So I think they're absolutely incredible, one-of-a-kind pieces, and it's going to bring so much to our city. So thank you so much for that.
Deputy Mayor Bryley.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to mention item seven O as well, but I cannot add any more on to what Commissioner Persis has already said, so thank you.
Well said. Thank you. Commissioner Talland.
Ditto for both of those with the sculptures. And I encourage up on the dais to look at the handout that we did receive. I did meet with Judy Stein and Giulio Truglio, and had a nice conversation with them and what their vision is. And they're starting to look about fundraising and how they can continue this project in the future, and it is very exciting. So that's my comment on that. I did have a couple other comments, if it's okay. I'll try to be brief. Just, I just want to just reiterate what smart use it is of us when we do approve projects that, when we're using taxpayer money, when we're coupling that money with monies that we're either receiving from the state or the federal government or Echo or FDOT. So, you know, that's always, it's not like we're out here just spending money. We're bringing money in, and then we're using city money. And also, the stormlining is an accepted standard. I always question that, and I know we've been getting all these emails about boil water and all the water mains have been breaking. And my first thought was, man, we must have some really old pipes. And maybe we do, but we are, we do have a plan, and we are lining them, and we're taking care of our infrastructure, and I'm very appreciative to Public Works for that. And, you know, some of those mishaps are not by design. There are other companies coming in and doing what they do with some of those cables, or, I don't know, wires, whatever they're putting in. So I just want the public to know that our Public Works is doing a great job in this lining the infrastructure is a gold standard, so.
Great. Commissioner Sargent, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item F, just the, we're updating the lights at the softball quads to LED. This is a huge improvement. Not only will it save us money on energy, but also save us money on, we won't have to replace these light bulbs like we currently have to do with the metal halogens that requires a bucket truck and a person to go up there, and it's very expensive. So this is a great investment. And also, on item G, the regrading of the baseball fields at Nova. I've heard, obviously, I'm out at the fields all the time with the kids, and all the parents are ecstatic that this is finally getting done. And I'd like to thank Commissioner Talland for championing the dedicated milage rate for leisure services, which helped us in turn get the Echo grant from the county. Thank you to Councilman Kent as well. And I think he said it best that it was because of that dedicated milage rate was one of the key factors in their decision-making for approving these projects for us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I just wanted to comment on the Ormond Beach Arts District Sculpture Project. I agree with everything that's been said about it. It's one of the things that Main Street and now the Arts District has done such an amazing job of here in Ormond Beach, and this will only add to that. It's creating a sense of place, which public placemaking is such an important part of creating interest in your downtown, creating a space where people want to be, having walkability, things that we didn't really have in the downtown ten or twelve years ago. But through effort and foresight of many different people and commissions and staff, we have that now. foresight of many different people and commissions and staff, we have that now and continue to build upon that. These sculptures, Commissioner Persis, you mentioned, they're beautiful. People are going to be excited to see these, and I see different activities possible with them that should be fun, scavenger hunts and picture hunts and things of that nature. So I think it's really going to be a wonderful addition, and I appreciate all the hard work that's been done on it. I can't remember how many sculptures have already been donated, nine so far?
Nine have been sponsored.
Which is incredible, and so I just see it being a wonderful program. So we'll leave it at that, and Commissioner, if there's nothing else, we'll go to public hearings. I'll open the public hearings, and we'll start with 8A.
Ordinance number 2024-04, an ordinance authorizing the execution and issuance of a first amended and restated development order for a planned business development located at 251 South Atlantic Avenue, Volusia County Parcel Number 4214-19-07-0010, and a parcel of property along South Atlantic Avenue, Volusia County Parcel Number 4214-18-06-0011, known as the Orman Beach Holdings LLC, authorizing the removal of a sidewalk and beach access improvement, establishing conditions and expirations of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2024-04, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan, and I'll ask our planning director, Stevens Breaker, to speak on this item.
Good evening. Stevens Breaker, planning director of the city. This is a request for a planned business development amendment. The property is located at 251 South Atlantic Avenue, which is located here, and then at the intersection of Orman Parkway and South Atlantic Avenue. The original development order was ordinance 2023-05. The only request to that approved development order is to allow the removal of the sidewalk and the beach walkover. This was the site plan that was shown with the development order. Again, two different sides. This is the parking for the hotel. The yellow is the building, landscape around it. On the side next to the Seminole Avenue Beach Approach, there was a sidewalk and a access to the beach that was requested by a site plan review committee and granted by the applicant. The condition of the development order had two parts. One was the project shall construct a dedicated public beach sidewalk and beach walkover parallel to the Seminole Avenue Beach Approach, so the applicant is responsible for building it. The second part was that improvement was to be deeded to a public entity. The sidewalk and the beach walkover are planned to be deeded to Volusia County. So there are two parts of the condition. The applicant is still willing to build the improvement, but they don't have a public entity to give that improvement to for maintenance and liability. During the process, as the project moved forward, we worked through a number of items. Volusia County provided us documentation that they felt that the Seminole Avenue Beach Approach was adequate. They made it clear that they would neither accept maintenance for the sidewalk and beach approach, nor would they accept liability. So basically, there's a development order condition which the applicant can't satisfy. They're still willing to build it, but they have no one to deed the public improvement to. So they've applied for an amendment to remove the public sidewalk and beach approach. At the planning board member, uh, planning board, they also said, again, they're willing to build it. The staff report reviewed three options. One is to approve the applicant's request to remove the public improvement. The second is to deny their amendment. Staff report reviews why that would not be a typical course of action. In essence, you'd be forcing a private entity to maintain a public improvement on a private property. Another option is for the city to agree to accept the maintenance, and that has its own course of action. The staff report at the time identified, you know, discussing with Volusia County, but every correspondence we've received from Volusia County is they're not interested, again, in either maintenance or the liability acceptance. This item was reviewed by the planning board, who had, you know, a good discussion on it. Their recommendation was a six to O to remove the sidewalk and beach approach. The applicant is here to address the commissioner if there are any questions.
Well, I've got a question for you, Stephen, first. You only put a few options up there. I feel like there's other options. What if, what if we didn't want to accept a dune walkover, but we did want them to construct the sidewalk as originally proposed and now required? Is that a third option, as long as Orman Beach and possibly the county accepted the liability for that?
So where would the sidewalk go?
Right where it's shown.
All right, so there's no mechanism to get back to the beach or to, because in the end, applicant engineer?
I got to tell you, that makes no sense to me whatsoever. You can walk down the ramp to the beach right now. You have to walk through the kill zone to get there because you've got cars coming from each direction.
Mm-hmm.
So if the sidewalk goes down and stops at the beach, that's actually safer and better than having people walk through the middle of the kill zone to get to the beach. So I disagree with you on that statement that you just made. It makes no sense to me. Government doesn't have to make sense, but it's nice when it does. And so, Susan, if you could put up the picture that I asked you about earlier today, Commissioner, it's page 592-1185, at least in my agenda. I get the county not wanting to accept liability or maintenance on this dune walkover. We've all seen the experiences that we've had with dune walkovers, but with a sidewalk, if you stop the sidewalk right about where the walkover starts, and then whoever's walking down to the beach just walks the little additional down the side there to get to the beach, that's better and safer than what's there right now. The city could accept the liability or share that liability with the county on that. I don't agree with the county either. They say, well, we'll accept it in fee simple. We'll take all those property rights, fee simple property rights, but we're not going to take any liability. I mean, Randy can tell us, I don't think it works that way. If you own a piece of property, fee simple, if there's an accident on that property, they're coming to you with a lawsuit. So, and the safety aspect of it makes no sense either, because the county, I would think, would want a sidewalk for safety rather than having people back and forth in the kill zone all day long, waiting for a car to back into them, run over a small child, whatever the situation is. It would just make so much more sense. Another thing is that, right now, this ramp is closed to beach traffic. I don't know, things change. We could get a storm, that could be the hardest packed beach you've ever seen in your life, and then they open that up to beach driving and put a booth there to take money from people, and then you've got a third element of traffic up and down that approach with no sidewalk. We can't say that's not going to be the case in two years, three years, five years, 10 years, whatever the situation is. So, you know, when this project was sold to me, a big component of saying yes to it was the fact that they were providing public access there, and now that's changing, and I don't like it one bit. So Commissioner Sargent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, when I heard this, I thought that the residents were losing out on something that we were promised. So I called the applicant's attorney, Mr. Merrill, yesterday, and I was thinking, what could we get if we weren't, if the county didn't want to accept a liability, maintenance, city, it's messy, I get it. So I said, well, maybe we can get a shower. Then I went back to what Ronald Reagan said in the 80s, trust but verify. So my way home from baseball, I called Councilman Kent, and I said, hey, can you tell me where you are on this? You know, did you see a picture of what we're looking at here? Never saw a picture. Staff never showed him anything. So Councilman Kent said in his closing remarks today that he would bring it back before the county, so I think we should let the applicant continue with construction so it's not holding up anything, but I think the residents and the county can figure that out on their end. Correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman Kent, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I think that's what was said today. And I don't agree with the planning boards saying that, oh, we have 20 feet, we can walk there. I've walked this with my kids and a wagon. You're walking behind cars that are backing up, not paying attention. Why would you not want, why would the county not want, why would anyone not want a sidewalk in front of this? It makes no sense. I understand the liability, the maintenance. This was part of the original, and I think we need to stick with that. They're, I believe, still willing to put it in. I think we need to just send it back to the county and let them accept liability and maintenance and figure it out on their end. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Deputy Mayor Bryley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I just had a quick question, I guess, be for Stephen. Well, this was the Quality Inn years ago, and the Seminole ramp has always been there, and just refresh my memory, because I'm a little bit foggy on it. Was there any sidewalk pedestrian facility at that, there at that time?
On the private property? Not to my knowledge.
Okay, so there was not even anything on the county side, on the ramp?
I believe the beach approach is the same as it is today.
So there was never any sort of sidewalk or pedestrian?
Correct.
Okay.
That was a garage right there to go in underneath.
Right.
There was no sidewalk there, you just drive in.
Commissioner Persis.
Yeah, and I agree with what everyone said, and, you know, beach approaches, especially during summer, the time when we have so many tourists here going back and forth and in and out of the beach and around those hotels, it's very, very dangerous, and we really need to have that sidewalk.
Commissioner Sargent.
Randy, would it be appropriate to make a motion to table this so that they could take it back to the, what would be the proper, I know we had three up there, but I don't think what we are trying to accomplish is in those three options, so can you provide some guidance, please?
Well, my, yeah, I'll try to do that best I can. So it appears that there's been some staff level discussions from staff to staff, and I believe maybe the city manager may have had a discussion with the county administrator. Question is, has the county council, has the full county council weighed in on the question? From your discussion with Councilman Kent, maybe it happened, maybe it didn't happen, I don't, I don't know. So I think really what you want is a discussion with your counterparts at the county council. And so perhaps what you could do is you could, you can make a motion to continue this for some reasonable period of time, and then ask the county council to specifically weigh in on the question. And what you might want to do, and the city manager can help carry that message over to the county administrator that way, is to present them with some options. And we talked a little, the mayor suggested one, I think that wasn't previously considered, so give them all of the options. And I'd agree with the mayor that it'd be rather difficult to accept a public amenity, that's what I'm going to call it, and not accept the risk with the liability for that. And I understand the county's reluctance to do that from the county staff, because we deal with the same issues here as well, and we have issues cross-jurisdictionally with the county in terms of whether it's the city's responsibility or the county's responsibility. But public beach, pedestrian beach access performs a specific public safety measure, and you would like to think that that would be more important at the end of the day. So my recommendation, Commissioner Sargent, would be to make a motion to continue it for some period of time that you think is reasonable. I don't think it's going to hold up the construction or the pulling of permits or anything like that, right, Stephen?
So the project is under construction now, so no, it's not going to hold it up? I mean, is it possible to take a vote on first reading and then withhold second reading until?
Well, I don't think you have a consensus up to what this group wants to do, right?
The project is under construction.
So, but in the same vein, I think the applicant developers looking some finality on the question, and they feel like they're kind of caught in the middle, so 60 days, does that seem reasonable to get it before the county council and get a decision back?
Yes.
Troy's, or Councilman Kent is shaking his head, yes, and I was going to invite him up to, Councilman Kent, come on up, give us an update, only because his name was brought up. And then Commissioner Tallon wants to speak as well. Thank you, Councilman. Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, thank you for the opportunity. It's one of the main reasons I came tonight, and just so I am totally transparent with all of you in the room, the county talked to me about this months ago, and when they talked about a sidewalk, I was thinking the old Quality Inn and a sidewalk behind the wall on the property of where the Quality Inn was, and that just didn't make sense to me. So we chatted about it and rolled it around and was like, you know what, I just don't see the need. And then Commissioner Sargent reached out to me yesterday and sent me a picture from your agenda, which I had not seen, and I said, this makes a ton of sense. No one should be walking elderly or with young kids or, you know, even middle age, you know, walking down there and having the outrigger and the public parking where you've got cars backing into people. And Mayor, I'll just say, I think you hit the nail on the head when you said, you don't know what's going to happen in two years, five years, 10 years. You get one shot at this for probably at least 50 years. You get one shot. And I can tell you all, I talked about this in my closing comments just two hours ago at the county, and I talked to staff privately before the meeting, and I said, listen, I was not shown the picture that I saw. I want you to be prepared. I'm going to talk about it at the council meeting. I'm going to go to the Orman Commission meeting. My hope is that the Orman Commission will have a sidewalk because it's the right thing to do. So I am more than happy to talk with Mr. Rectonwell and see when we can get something on the agenda, you know, even if I've got to bring it up again at the next county council meeting and have it voted on that way to bring it up, so that this can be done correctly. And I think we can work this issue out with liability and maintenance. You know, you all bring up a good point about the ramp down to the beach, you know, the headache you've had with Andy Romano Park, when, you know, the common sense approach to me would bring a wheelbarrow full of sand and dump it in front of it and let's use the darn thing, but there's rules. You can't do that stuff. So I think your idea of stopping it at the sidewalk and then having them grade it right into the beach ramp and being able to walk down there, I don't know if that's going to work, because I'm sure there's rules about ADA compliance and different things, but I think all of that can be worked out. My hope is that we get a sidewalk there. Any other questions I can answer for anybody?
Commissioner.
I have a question. Did, so none of you on the county council received that picture?
No.
Okay.
No, this wasn't, this wasn't presented to us, so we did not, but I did bring it up today at closing comments. We didn't discuss it. I just let everybody know that this was coming before the Orman Commission and that I would be here, and hopefully you all would get a sidewalk there.
Thank you. I don't have any questions for you, but thank you for spending your time and explaining that and being our champion at the county.
Absolutely. Yep, you know, partnerships are hugely important, and, you know, we will continue to work together and make great things happen.
I appreciate that. And my question, really, and it's to Stephen or Rob or whatever, is how do we get to this point? So I agree, we see a beautiful design, we see a sidewalk, and I am guilty as well, that sold, that didn't sell the whole project, but that was an important part to me as well, that access. Should that have been your responsibility, Mr. Merrill, to talk to county first with liability? Are you, or are you just, is your job just the construction of it? I mean, that's, how did we get to that point?
We're ready.
Segue in.
Let, well, Merrill, for the record, with Cobb Cole, let me start by saying, do you guys have a brand new Marriott Residence Inn Hotel, Motel? We haven't had a new hotel on the beach in Orman for, I think, 15 or 17 years. This is great news. So this is sounding like a bad meeting, we're having bad news here. That's not what's going on here. We, the developers of this project are still willing to put the sidewalk in, always have. We told the planning board that. You know, I think one of the planning board members, like me, has been up and down that approach a thousand times, never seen a kill zone, but if you guys think it's kill zone, we want to make sure you're going to get what you bargained for, for sure. And to Troy's point about not seeing this, that's not what, the county council hasn't seen this, they wouldn't have seen it. This is a question about the Public Works and the folks over at the county deciding whether they want a sidewalk or not, and so they said they did, and then they said they didn't in writing. So we're kind of stuck in a spot here where we're willing to pay the money to fix it, to do it, but we don't want to own the property and have to lie. It's not fair to us, certainly, and I think everybody agrees with that. So if you guys, the only one thing I would say, other than I hope answered your question, we did what we're supposed to do, and, you know, to the point about whether the county council saw it, I'm happy to show them anything. I think Troy and I talked about this two years ago, when it first came up, but I'm an open book, he knows my phone number, we can talk about it whenever he wants to, but But at the end of the day, if you guys would please, if you're going to talk to the county, will you please do that and and decide what you guys want to do? Because it's this has been fleshed out fully over and over again with the county staff in writing. And we just need to have, here's the here's what we want, and here's what we want you guys to do and when, and we'll do it because we're under construction. And it's the perfect time to put the sidewalk in while we're in there with construction.
So before it was present, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Protocol, I'm not good at that. So before it was presented to planning and and they approved it, did you have a conversation with county staff that that and they were on board?
Yeah, we had a conversation with city and county staff.
And they were on board with the sidewalk? And did liability ever come up or all that? Or is that just assumed if county approves it, that their liability?
No, they wanted it originally, and then they did. So.
Okay.
And that's.
And that's that was my question is how did we get to this point?
I think they've lost a lot of the ramps and they lost a lot of the, you know, they they saw it as a liability. It was much bigger than it maybe looked like originally.
Okay, thank you.
If you guys change their mind, we're happy to build it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to continue this item for 60 days and direct staff to get with the county to get it on the agenda and move it forward.
Second.
Seconded. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Eight B.
Ordinance number 2024 dash zero five, an ordinance approving the final plat for the Ridge Haven subdivision, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2024 dash zero five, read by title only.
Thank you, and I'll ask our planning director, Stevens Breaker, to speak on this item as well.
Good evening, Stevens Breaker, planning director. This is a final plat request for the Ridge Haven subdivision. The subdivision is located east of Plantation and Ex Boulevard, and then it is north of North US Highway One. The subdivision has been approved for 286 lots on approximately 103 acres. Subdivision development in Ormond Beach is a three-step process. It starts with the zoning. They obtained a planned residential development with ordinance 2326. That was their zoning. They did a preliminary plat, which is the construction drawings. That was approved with resolution 23109. There's a variety of housing, including larger lots in the rear next to those prime run, few flexes along this side, and then 60 and 55 foot wide lots located next to Plantation House. This step is the last step, is the final plat where they it's a legal document to subdivide land after construction or posting of bond. This project is also under construction. They intend to post a bond in order to record the plat. Final plats are reviewed by the Site Plan Review Committee, City Attorney's Office, and City Survey. Planning Board recommended approval of this application with a six to zero vote. The applicant is here if there are any questions.
Thank you, Stephen. This is the one we presented on for Smart.
This project also won an award from the Florida Planning and Zoning Association. It was also presented to the League of Cities.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions for Stephen?
I move approval.
Second.
I don't have any cards. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just to piggyback on that, that's and you took the words out of my mouth, this this project won an award and it's become kind of the poster child for smart development with the state of Florida. So congratulations on that.
Anyone else? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Eight C.
Ordinance number 2024 dash zero six, an ordinance amending section two dash 17 R dash four, single family cluster and townhouse zoning district. Section two dash 18 R dash five, multi-family medium density zoning district. And section two dash 19 R dash six, multi-family medium high density zoning district of Article Two District Regulations of Chapter Two District and General Regulations of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code by amending their rear yard setbacks and correcting the street side slash corner and additional water body setbacks, labels, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2024 dash zero six, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan. And again, I'll ask Stephen to just speak briefly on this one.
Good evening, Stevens Breaker, planning director. This is a land development code to the R four, R five, and R six. Those are the higher density residential. There was a townhome amendment in 2022, and that ordinance inadvertently switched the rear yard setback from 20 feet to 25. The purpose of this ordinance is to switch it back to 20 feet where where it should be. It also precs a couple of labels, the side street corner and the water body setbacks. So it just fixes some things within those districts. Planning Board recommended approval with a six to zero vote of these land development code amendments.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of ordinance number 2024 dash zero six.
Second.
Moving seconded. Any other discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Eight D.
Resolution number 2024 dash 75, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida, approving the preliminary plat for the Tattersall subdivision Phase One, a planned residential development subdivision, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2024 dash 75, read by title only.
Thank you. And again, Planning Director Stevens Breaker.
This is a request for a preliminary plat for the Tattersall subdivision. This project has an approved development order with ordinance 2233. That ordinance approved 129 129 lot subdivision on 84 acres. That development order provided the property zoning. It determined the number of lots, the buffer, and concurrency. The project is located at the corner of Airport Road, which is located on the bottom, and Timber Creek Road. It's about 84 acres in total. If you recall, the subdivision process from Ridge Haven, it's the same for this project. So the development order went through a process. It was reviewed by our Site Plan Review Committee, went through a neighborhood meeting, planning board provided a recommendation, and then the city commission provide that final ordinance approval. That is a zoning document, so it didn't have any detailed construction documents. That's what this application is. So the preliminary plat is the construction drawing, so it shows you the details of how the subdivision is going to be developed. This application went through the same process, Site Plan Review Committee, a neighborhood meeting, planning board recommended approval, and then city commission tonight. As part of this, there was a proportionate fair share agreement that was approved. That is for the traffic and currency that this project creates. And there was also a drainage easement as a condition of the development order to take the water from Leeway Trail into the project and into Groover Branch. The next step after they go to construction or if they want to bond to record the plat would be the final plat, which is what you saw earlier in the Ridge Haven item. And that goes also to planning board and city commission. This was the original site plan that was approved. Again, the project is located at Airport Road and Timber Creek Road. The yellow are the wetland areas, the blue is the stormwater, and the green is the natural preservation area. The density for the project, the gross density is 1.53 units per acre. The S the suburban low density residential density is 1.9 units per acre. The project that was approved had three off-site improvements. One was the drainage swale from Leeway Trail down to Groover Branch. The second was a sidewalk that extended beyond the property to connect to Leeway Trail for school walkability. And then the last one was preserving a 32-foot right-of-way for Volusia County for the potential future expansion of North Timber Creek Road. The project natural characteristics, the entire site has a 40-foot minimum landscape buffer around it. All landscape buffers are exceeded. The natural areas are exceeded. 12.69 acres are required, 15.77 acres are provided, and that's outside the wetlands. And then the recreational area provided was doubled with the land development code required. So the preliminary plat is doing a portion of the subdivision. They're doing 75 plots. So the area around that stormwater would be left natural until they come back with Phase Two. Phase Two would also require planning board approval and city commission action. The criteria for the subdivision was provided in your staff report. In essence, it's consistency with the approved development order. So it's not a relook at the entire development order. It's are you consistent with what was approved in the development order and consistency with the land development code? The planning board recommended approval with a six to one vote, and the applicant is here to address the commissioner. If there are any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Stephen at this point?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
So I think I was on the planning board at the time when this first started and you know, there was the issues of the water, the traffic, the school and 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 all. And I think Tattersall addressed those all very well. The other, the newest concern I had or just thought is, and after reading some of the neighborhood comments, was the was the maintenance of the Grover Grosvenor's branch maintenance, the ditch. Have we has staff ever talked about maintaining that or is that part of a plan to help with that water?
There are certain sections of the Groover Branch. Some are in private property ownership as you get down into Volusia County. Some are under Volusia County control as it crosses the roadway. So, you know, it kind of depends on where you are, on who the maintenance entity is. I believe they also have an environmental list. You can kind of speak of of that, what you can and can't do within the maintenance of that area.
Okay. I think that would be helpful for some for some of that water property, that water issues. So, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Bryley.
Yeah, Stephen, and that was part of my concern as well, I think, because it sounds like there's several jurisdictional boundaries in there as far as the the maintenance of Groover Creek, because apparently it sounds like the Army Corps of Engineers no longer will accept any maintenance or ma I guess maintenance of that creek. I think they turned it they turned it over to St. John's, which would be a state. And then you've probably got county, private property, and city. So it would have to be a collaboration of those agencies because if one agency does something and the others don't, you you don't do much. You still run into problems downstream. So I would like to see some sort of collaboration. I mean, I know we can't make that as part of part of the.
It's not part of the.
Right. But, you know, just in the future, maybe they can work together to keep that keep that water flowing.
Good deal. Thank you, Stephen. I do have one card from David Jewell.
David Jewell, 2040 Tony Street, Ormond Beach. I'd like to thank the commission for listening to me. Last time I was up here, I didn't end very well. I apologize to anybody here, to all of anybody sitting out here. I'd like to thank Randy Hayes. He took me into his office one day, and we spent a good hour discussing this very thing that was told to speaking of with the drainage, so on and so forth. Also, I met with. I have a piece of paper here. I gave one copy to Randy Hayes, I believe. And I'd like to give it to all of you.
It'll it'll come to all of us.
I had more to give each one of us, experience the whole thing, all the questions you were asking. That is written by a gentleman that was the head of the St. John's Water Management Council. He's since deceased, quite a well-respected attorney. And he wrote how the water intersects with the law aspect of everything that has been determined so far has been rules and regulations. We haven't put the law with it. That tells and it shows examples of the Florida State Legislature Legislature, and it's backed up by Florida State Supreme Court where they have made decisions. In there, it tells where some properties are not buildable. And that explains it all. It's a hard read. I've read it 10 times. One of the things I would like to commend, Mr. The Pads and the attorneys and engineers, they got something right on the letter that I received. It's a description of the natural preservation area signs that have to be erected around the what lands, I would assume. The only thing that they didn't quite get correct is I'd like to see them placed every 50 feet all around way around the whole 84 acres. That would make a wonderful natural preservation area for the city of Ormond Beach. That's what it should be. I'd like to quote one of the commissioners here tonight, the mayor. It's a tortured piece of land that should not be built there. With that, thank you very much. Oh, by the way, I am very much opposed to this piece of property being used the way they're going to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And next up is Mark Watts, attorney for the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the commission, for the record, Mark Watts with the Law Firm of Cobb Cole, 231 North Woodland Boulevard, Deland. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you this evening. We've we've spent a lot of time here together on this particular property and this project. And I think we've improved it for that. You know, as Stephen and I have to thank your staff, they're always great to work with as we work through kind of the the layers of your review and approval process. And here tonight, you know, we're we're at the point, you know, looking at, I think in your materials, you've got a copy of the the staff report that went to the planning board, and on page nine lists the criteria and the analysis that the staff went through. Here tonight, we're really here looking at, have we followed the rules? Have we followed the rules that were established in the PD Development Order? Have we followed the rules that are in your land development code and the rules that you require us to follow for other outside agency? And the answer, based on your staff review and analysis, is yes, we have. We've met the conditions that have been set forward, not only by your standard code, but also by the agreements we made through the hearing process on the zoning for the for the property. And so those off-site improvements that, you know, that we committed to, we were we were following through on. Commissioner Talland, I fully agree with you that there are some questions with regard to Groover's branch. We have limited ability to do anything with it. We have the ability to pull some of the fallen trees out as we're, you know, kind of preparing, you know, the the property for the the subdivision. But we don't have any control upstream or downstream. Our obligation is we can't add any, you know, faster velocity of stormwater going into it or runoff going into it. We can't increase the volume, you know, of anything going into it, and we're we're meeting those standards. I do encourage the city, and we we've talked with Mr. Jewell at, I think, almost every meeting we've had, and the neighborhood meetings and the various hearings we've had on the project, I think he raises a valid point. And I do think, yeah, I think, Mr. Mayor, you said a few minutes ago, it's it's a cross jurisdictional issue. You have a number of different jurisdictions here, and I think it's a city and a county and a state discussion to figure out, you know, what's the right way to make sure it's being maintained. You know, there was an article in the paper today or yesterday, I think, about DOT coming in and maintaining, can't remember which canal it was, but down the Nova Canal down in in Port Orange to alleviate some of the flooding that occurred during the the last several storms. Here, I don't know that you have, you know, one agency that you may be able to go to. You may have to, you know, kind of work together with the city and the county and others to accomplish it. I think we're we're doing the parts that we could to alleviate some of the concerns we heard through the process with the flooding and stuff across Leeway. We're here to answer any other questions you might have on the technical compliance and issues of that nature. Our project engineer is here. We strategically placed him in the middle of the road, so it's inconvenient to get him out when we're happy to.
Any questions for Mr. Watts?
I think we're in pretty good shape. Commission, I'll let you know, I did say it was a tortured piece of property. I think it came to us a few times before you all ever had it.
Yes.
That was really more what I was talking about.
Many times.
And, you know, Angie Scholl, one of our planning board members, voted against it. I'm going to vote for this tonight, but because I did vote against initially the the development order, but it was close. I was maybe if it had been three to five homes less, I probably would have voted for it at the time. And I think when I read the minutes, what Angie was saying was what I was concerned about. I thought things would flow better if it was just a the just a little bit less dense. But none of us always get everything we want. I don't think it's a bad project at all. I think it's going to be beautiful, and I think people are going to love living there ultimately. So and I think you've met the technical requirements. So really, honestly, I feel like we're obliged to vote for it. But, Commissioner, I'll let you speak, and if you have any questions.
No, I just want to say, it came before us. I think I voted against it several times. And finally, you know, that, you know, you all fixed everything that we asked you to fix. So here here we are now. And I think I agree with you, Mayor, what you said, we're we're almost obliged to do it. And and I do think it's going to be beautiful. And so looking forward to seeing it.
Commissioner Tall.
And most of the area that was concerned, if if, just to refresh all of our memories, was the corner of Airport Road and Timber Creek Road. And look what they've done, you know, they.
They preserve the wetlands there. They have a, a great preservation area, and that's where a lot of the water was going over the road and mushy and the whole thing. Mushy? I guess that's a good word. But, so, I, I'm very appreciative of the design.
Well, I credit our, our clients. They did a great job rolling in their sleeves and really working on it with the engineers and the neighborhood.
Anyone else?
One more thing.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. So, I guess, and Mr. Watts is correct, we're here to approve the, or, or vote on the-
Plot.
Plot, the plot. Plot. But as, as an addendum, not to muddy what we're doing up here, can we direct, or would you all think it would be good to direct staff to look at what can, we could possibly do for the Grosvenor, I can never pronounce it, branch area? Yeah, that one. Randy, you're leaning over. Okay, tell me.
Well, I've got a squeaky mic, I'm sorry. So, they're kind of two separate. They're, they're kind of related cousins, but they're not directly related. So, yes, you're here on a technical requirement of a preliminary plot. Aside from that, if you would like to ask the staff to look at some of the, you know, ways to alleviate drainage in that area, then you could do that. I don't know if it's a question without a solution because of all the different conveyances and the, and the property rights and all of that that goes with it, but if it's something that you're interested in looking at, you can certainly ask your, your planning staff to, to look at that with you. And I'm sure the applicant would be willing to do that as well, so.
Okay. Thank you.
So, that's kind of a separate question-
That's a separate thing. I understand that, and I've got it.
Any other questions for Mr. Watts? I don't have any other cards. Thank you, sir. Just need a motion and a second.
Move approval.
Second.
Any other discussion, Commission? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes.
Resolution number 2024-76, a resolution authorizing the execution and issuance of a development order for a special exception regarding the Wawa store number 5437 to be located at 1670 North US Highway 1, within the B-7 Highway Tourist Commercial Zoning District to allow two electronic changeable copy signs for the retail prices of gasoline, an additional 3.74 square feet of monument signage, and two canopy spanner signs totaling approximately 12.08 square feet, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2024-76, read by title only.
Thank you. And I'll ask Planning Director Stevens-Brecker to give us a brief entree on this item.
This is a special exception for a project proposed at 1670 North US Highway 1. The project is proposed at the intersection of Destination Daytona Drive and US Highway 1. The special exception is for signage. This is the proposed site plan. You would have, obviously, US 1 would be up here, the gas canopy, and the store. The three requests are all for signage. One is electronic changeable copy sign, similar to the past request. In order to get this, they have to go through a special exception process. One of the requests they also asked was for 3.74 square feet of additional monument sign. Since they were going through the process, staff didn't have objection. It is in a commercial area with no residential around. And then the last request, similar to what was done on West Granada, they're seeking to do a spanner sign, which our, our Land Development Code doesn't really recognize. Again, it's existing on West Granada, and they also went through a plan development there to allow it. The special exception was reviewed by the planning board. It was recommended approval by a five-to-one vote, but one vote against it believes that electronic changeable copy signs should be allowed in a more broad basis. Until that's done, he's going to vote no on everyone. The applicant is also here, if there are any questions.
Any questions? Attorney Posey from the Storch Law Firm is here, and he's sat through the entire meeting tonight. Any questions for him? I think we're good. Is there anything you desperately want to talk about?
I think it looks great, Mr. Mayor. Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded, and-
Comments before we call the vote?
Let's have some discussion, yep.
Your discussion, yeah. So, my, my question is, or my concern is, if we start going bigger now, I don't have a problem with, I know we're doing the, the movable LED and whatever, I don't have a problem with that. I have a problem, a problem with bigger and more, because once we go bigger and more, the next person's going to want bigger and more. And I'm just a little hesitant on that. I'm not, you know, hardcore anything right now, but it's just something to think about. If we approve bigger and more now, will everyone, you know, will they want to come back other places while they had a bigger sign? We want a bigger sign.
So, here-
No, I was just going to make a comment. I think we vote on these signs one at a time. I mean, we don't do it in bulk, so we take them individually, so-
Correct. We could watch that. You know, we can be aware of that.
And Deputy Mayor Bryle, we're talking about bigger and more. Commissioner Tolland brought up a good point about signage. Once you start down that road, how do you avoid going bigger and more for the next person? Commissioner Persis pointed out correctly that we take them one at a time, and then Stephen was going to maybe give us some background on how we avoid-
Commissioner Persis, I think, said appropriately. So, it, it, we review this a lot like variances. Each one is separate, each one is reviewed on its own merit, and each one goes through a public hearing process. Going through a special exception process, as Mr. Posey can probably tell you, is not something that, that business owners typically want to do. So, they're really going through a process in order to get that. And the commission has the authority on each individual one to say that 3.74 is appropriate, but five isn't. So, it, it is your discretion. We don't have sign variances. This special exception process was put into place to allow people to ask, and then it's the commission discretion to either approve it or deny it.
And Deputy Mayor, did you have any-
My apologies.
Not at all. Did you have any questions for Mr. Posey on behalf of the applicant?
No, sir, because I, again, I agree with Commissioner Persis. We take these special exceptions on a case-by-case basis. But I agree with Commissioner Tolland, but I share your, your concern on something like that.
Good deal. All right. If you want to, if you want to give it to us, we're happy to listen.
The same question came up with planning board. So, Joey Posey, 420 South Nova, attorney for the applicants. And just to briefly touch on this, because the same question was at planning board. You know, the things that I think make the site unique is its proximity to the interstate. It's really a safety concern. So, you know, in terms of percentage of increase, you know, you're asking for more visibility on a higher frequency, higher speed, that, that, you know, there's a really distinguishing factor there. And in the totality of sign entitlements here, it's actually less. It may be an increase in the actual monument, but in total, total signage, it's, it's actually less. So, you know, there's not wall signage that's, you know, a competing factor here. There's other signage aspects here. So, maybe to give you a little ammunition for the future, I wanted to point those out because it was the same question that came up at planning board.
So, your expectation is the signage is to be seen from 95, not from the US 1 corridor?
To, to make it as safe as possible for those getting off of 95, or, or at least traveling, that it's, it's an easier sign to see. That, you know, if it was our preference, you know, we did come in with a little larger sign for that reason, but, you know, your staff working with us, we got to a point where we're all happy, and we can work with it, but it really is a safety concern.
Thank you. Anything else? Commission?
I move approval of resolution number 2024-76.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any other questions or discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Tolland?
No.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryle?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, and we'll close the public hearings. Thank you, Mr. Posey, and go to item nine. Ask the clerk to read that by title.
Ordinance number 2024-07, an ordinance related to pedestrian and vehicle safety within public roads and right-of-way, amending Chapter 17 Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Spaces of the Code of Ordinances by amending Section 17-10 to Add Unsafe Pedestrian Use of Right-of-Ways, Adopting Findings of Fact, Providing for Applicability, Providing for Definitions, Establishing Prohibited Use of a Public Road Rights-of-Way, Providing for Enforcement and Penalties, Providing for Additional Remedies, Providing for Severability, and Providing an Effective Date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2024-07, read by title only.
Thank you, and I'll ask our city attorney, Randy Hayes, to speak on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance that was prepared at the request of the commission, essentially. The background information within the ordinance is pretty self-explanatory. Deputy City Attorney Ann-Margaret Emery is the one that put all the hard work in it. If you have any questions specific to the ordinance, what we're trying to accomplish, we'll be glad to answer those for you. Ann-Margaret will be happy to answer those for you, and we promise not to provide a 20-minute presentation.
Thank you, Randy. And I don't have any cards. Commission, any questions for Ann-Margaret? You just want to give us a little brief background, or you need to make a record?
No, I, I, you know, there's quite a bit of whereas clauses there, findings already, and a lot of backup material, so I won't put you all through it, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Great. Anyone?
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. My only discussion is, I think it's well-needed, well-done, and I appreciate, Randy, you and Ann-Margaret and the rest of your staff taking the time to put it all together. It should be a huge, huge improvement for us. Thank you. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryle?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 10A.
Resolution number 2024-77, a resolution of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida, responding to the initiating resolution of the County of Villas- regarding the North US Highway 1 inter-local service boundary agreement, providing for transmission and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2024-77, read by title only.
Perfect, and I'll ask our planning director, Stevens-Brecker, to speak on this item.
In 2014, the city enacted the inter-local service boundary agreement. That agreement was valid for a period of 10 years. It's set to expire in August of this year. What Villas- County did was provided an initiating resolution to extend the inter-local service boundary agreement. Their resolution was 23/156. That, that resolution had two parts of it. One was to expand the inter-local service boundary agreement, and then to renew it for a period of 10 days. In discussions with Villas- County and based on city commission pass direction, there is no desire to expand the inter-local service boundary agreement. So, the, the responding resolution is only to extend it for a period of 10, 10 years. At the next commission meeting, you'll have an ordinance that will seek to extend it 10 years, and that will have to go back to Villas- County for approval. We believe that we can get it done by the expiration date of August 24. So, this is really kind of the first step, the responding resolution. We are required to send this resolution back to the county. They are aware of it, they're expecting it, and staff is available if there are any questions.
Great. Any questions, Commission? I don't have any cards.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryle?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, and we are at reports, suggestions, and requests, and tonight, we start with City Manager Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Commission. Just some general updates for you first, and then I've got a few detail items. May 14th, we're going to continue our strategic plan initiatives update, and we will be talking with Advent Health regarding their new building. President and CEO David Weiss will be here to give the commission a brief update on that. We'll be looking at F.I. 95 interchange project update, and they will be there to make a brief presentation. We will talk about the Riverbend Golf Course land use study, and then we'll also update the commission on chambers technology that we're looking at, and tell you where we're at and where we're going on that. On June 4th, you'll have your first budget workshop. That will be the CIP draft workshop. And then on July 15th, excuse me, from June 5 to July 15th, the commission will have a break. You won't have any meetings to allow staff time to prepare the budget. We're very grateful for that. On July 16th, you will have your operating budget workshop, and then on July 23rd, regular commission meetings will resume. I think I've sent you a schedule for all of that, so you should have that. If you need anything further, let me know. I wanted to give you an update on the PAC. Bomar Construction will, the award for Bomar Construction for the fire damage repair will be on your May 21st agenda, and once that is approved, materials will be ordered, and it will take eight to 10 weeks to receive all of those materials, and then approximately 18 weeks for the repairs to be completed. We feel it's important to jumpstart that process so we can get the materials on order as quickly as possible, and we believe we have the ability to get all of the same materials that were originally purchased, so we're excited about that. I'm happy to answer any questions. Are there any questions on the PAC? Okay. And we're still, you know, working through the insurance claim. I also wanted to mention to you that May 27th is the Rockefeller, is the memorial, Veterans Memorial Day celebration, celebration, remembrance. And so, that's a well-attended event on May 27th. I think we just lost a light. We did. Okay.
Should make LEDs, don't have that problem.
May 27th at 9:00 AM at Rockefeller Gardens. And you've been there many times before, and we know it's good to get there early for parking, and we have reserved seats for the commission. A couple of shout-outs tonight. I want to recognize Chief Jesse Godfrey. He is going to be participating in his fifth Unity Tour. Fifth?
Eighth.
Eighth, eighth, eighth. And the Unity Tour is a bike ride from Southern Virginia all the way into DC and culminates at the Police Officers Museum. And it's a memorial ride, and each officer rides for a fallen fellow police officer. They are given their names, and they oftentimes have the opportunity to meet those relatives of the loved ones, and those are people that are inscribed upon the wall in the police, fallen police officer memorial. We're very proud of the chief, and he has two additional men riding with him, and then we have another individual from the Police Department attending to be protection, a motorcycle rider, to help ensure the safety of officers. Chief, we're very proud of you and your efforts. It takes a lot of effort to train to ride 250 miles in two and a half days, three days. So, we're really proud of you and your officers. I know you've all worked hard to train up for this event, and we wish you Godspeed and be safe, and we'll be praying for you while you're away. I would also like to announce that Susan Daughters, our city clerk, has been placed on the 2024 Municipal Clerk Honor Roll. This honor roll is now in its 24th year of this program, and has given municipal officers and private citizens a chance to recognize city clerks from across the country for the important work they do for our communities. As much as it is a privilege for all the general code staff to host the honor roll again, they are really dedicated to recognizing these individuals that are the backbone of our commission meetings, who provide all the detail and summary, and it's, it takes a great amount of work, and so we like to thank you for that. Congratulations. Last, but certainly not least, is, we talked about public art in the downtown, and Susan, do you have those pictures? I think Main Street is sponsoring six of those placement of art, and they've asked the city to sponsor two additional works of art. They have sufficient, we have sufficient funds to do that. That would be $8,000 to place the artwork, build the platform that it has to stand on. And so, this one is called "A Day Off," if you can go back, and that will be placed, I believe, in Casson Park in the walkway between, or close to the walkway between Casson Park and Bailey River Bridge. And as you can see, it's a, a dad or a granddad and a son fishing, and it's in an appropriate location for that, so. And then the second one is called- And then the second one is called "The Bench," and it's a woman on a bench with her purse. And that one will be placed over in, I think, between Fortunato and the casements, Rockefeller Gardens. So those are the two ones that they have suggested, and I think they're really appropriate for those locations, and so my plan is to authorize that unless you all had any issues or concerns about that.
That's great. Thank you.
And let's see, what else? That's all I have, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to address those.
Any questions for the City Manager?
Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley.
No comments. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Claire. And City Attorney Randy Hayes.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I do have one thing this evening. I'll try to keep it brief. I wanted to give you an update regarding the litigation matter involving the decision by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection to issue the air construction permit to Belvedere for the construction of the fuel farm at 874 Hall Road. Excuse me. You may recall that the issuance of the permit is one step in the overall approval process for the proposed project. There's lots of other things that occur at the same time. In any event, SR filed a petition in August and/or September challenging the DEP's decision to issue the permit and requesting what we call a DOA hearing, a DOA hearing, before the Department of Administrative Hearings challenging the decision by FDPC to issue the permit. Under the DOA process, an administrative law judge is assigned to conduct an evidentiary hearing or trial. And at the conclusion of the trial, the ALJ, as we refer to them, issues a recommended order. It's not a final order, but it's a recommended order to the Secretary of the Department, in this case, the Secretary of the FDPC, who is then charged with responsibility of issuing a final decision on the petition. In this instance, the ALJ issued a recommended order that the secretary dismissed Parat's petition challenging the permit, which would essentially provide finality to the issuance, to the determination by DEP to issue that, that air construction permit. Parat has a right to file an appeal as a petitioner. If an appeal is not filed, then the permit will become final. After consulting, after Parat consulted with its legal counsel, including appellate counsel, there's a well-founded belief that Parat has a good basis to file an appeal, and hopefully you will be pleased to know that Parat has decided to file such an appeal. You may also recall that this commission unanimously opposes the proposed fuel farm at 874 Hall Road. You voted unanimously not to provide potable water to the project site or to annex the property for this project. And by unanimous vote, the commission also directed the City Manager and City Attorney to take all reasonable necessary action, including the hiring of professional consultants and attorneys to oppose the proposed fuel farm project, and we have done just that. Under the authority and the city charter, I engage law firm with expertise in FDPC matters on behalf of the city. Parat has hired the same firm, and that is the firm that has represented them in the litigation matter. Parat and the city share a common interest in opposing the proposed fuel farm because of the inherent risk that it poses to Parat and the general public. There is a, I guess, a, you could call it a shared interest in sharing, a common interest in sharing resources to combat this, this inherently dangerous project. So you have an opportunity this evening to show our residents that the city is very much committed to opposing the proposed fuel farm and to show Parat that you can continue to support their legal efforts in the appeal of the secretary's final order to dismiss their petition challenging the permit. And I prepared a motion. I'll read for you. There's eight parts to that if you wish to, to do so. So number one, first part of the motion. City Commission finds that the proposed fuel farm project at 874 Hall Road poses inherently dangerous risks to residents of the city, including corporate residents, specifically including, but not limited to, residents of Bear Creek, Ormond Lakes, poses a risk to operation, to the operation of recreational activities at the Ormond Beach Sports Complex and the airport, poses a risk to corporate residents such as SR Parat and other businesses in the vicinity of the proposed fuel farm. Number two, the city and Parat share a common interest in opposing the proposed fuel farm and sharing resources serves a legitimate public interest. A shared effort by the city and Parat is in the best interest of the general health, safety, and welfare of all residents of the city and the general public. Three, the commission affirms the unanimous vote previously taken not to provide water for the proposed project and not to annex the property at 874 Hall Road. Four, the commission finds that a valid and legitimate public purpose exists to oppose the proposed fuel farm. Five, City Manager and City Attorney are authorized, directed to continue to take all necessary and reasonable action they deem appropriate within their, their, their powers, including the expenditure of resources to oppose the proposed fuel farm at the project site. Six, the commission continues to support Parat in the litigation matter, including support in the appeal of the secretary's final decision and including the sharing of costs and legal expenses associated therewith. Seven, the commission respectfully requests that Belvedere move the location of the proposed fuel farm from 874 Hall Road to a more suitable location that will not pose inherently dangerous risks to residents of the city, including corporate residents and to the general public. Eight, the commission ratifies and affirms all administrative and legal action taken by city staff, including the City Manager and City Attorney and their designees, in opposition to the proposed fuel farm, and further directs the City Manager and City Attorney to do all things and take all action that is necessary and reasonable to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the city's residents and the general public. If, if that is suitable for you up here, then somebody can make a motion to adopt that as your motion, and, and then somebody can second that, and then the city clerk can call a vote on that motion.
I move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Yeah, I think we could all second that for sure. Any other discussion, Commission?
No.
I think we had committed to fight this at every available opportunity. This is, continues to be in line with that, with our residents, and we'll just continue the fight for fairness, reasonable public notice, and hopefully go into the Court of Appeals, we can get a reasonable and fair hearing on the matter. So if there's nothing else, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on that.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, and thank you, Randy, for all that. Anything else?
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I do have something.
City Manager Shanahan.
I just received an update from County Councilmember Troy Kent. He has indicated, did you get that?
You're stealing my thunder.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, update it.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. No, go ahead. No, you, you go ahead.
No, you go ahead, Joyce. I was just discussing with you. I'll do it with my close contacts. You go ahead, Joyce.
We'll go start with Commissioner Persis, then.
Oh, wow. I didn't know I was first. Great. Well, I am so happy to be here tonight, and we've heard so much good news, especially just what our attorney, Randy Hayes, just read to us. And I just want to say, I am so proud of our city for standing up for its residents in order to keep them safe from the serious, you know, serious is even, isn't even the best word, but the dangers of a fuel farm right here in our city. And there's an old saying, you know, choose your battles, and I have followed that most of my adult life, and this is one battle that I'm so proud that we are fighting, and I know we're going to continue to fight, so I'm very excited, very, very excited about that. I just want to say congratulations to Travis Sargent for winning the Mayor's Award for Your Fitness. That's awesome. Really, really great, and I was...
That was less than me.
Well, sometimes less is more, Mr. Sargent. Okay. I also wanted to just say I'm very excited about the chief going on the Unity Tour, and all of us up here have been on the Unity Tour, and sometimes we can go, sometimes we can't go. It's always, you know, kind of a funny time around Mother's Day, but I'm very excited that I get to go this time and can't wait to see, to see the chief ride his bike in and see, I think Corporal Summerlot is also riding, and a couple of our motorcycle guys, and it's just going to be, it really is a wonderful, wonderful thing that, that they do, so I just commend you for, for doing, for doing that. Just had to say that. There's been so much going on in the city. I made a list, like Commissioner Talland, I made a list. I don't know if I'm going to go through it all, but there's been so many things that we've all attended, and they've all been just so, just so wonderful. Of just a few that, I went, the casement 45-year celebration luncheon that we all were, it was wonderful that we were all able to attend, and they acknowledged all the volunteers for their, you know, all their years of service of, you know, running, running the casements and everything that they do, so that was really great. The Celtic Festival, again, was just great. It was so much fun, and it was crowded, and it was a beautiful day. That was just highly successful. And I wanted just to mention real quickly, there was a tee-off for the Mayor's Golf Tournament, and they had the tee-off reception at Oceanside Country Club upstairs, and they had this, it was really great because they had a special drink in honor of the mayor. I'm not going to even name the drink, but it was, it was a very nice drink that many people really liked. Let's see. And most of us were here for, right here in the chambers for a chamber leadership day where we spoke to the chamber group that was going through training, their leadership group, and we all, you know, explained why we do what we do and what brought us to this point. And I think, I think people find it interesting, you know, because we all have different backgrounds, but we all have the same goals, I think, so. The other, there was a ribbon cutting for Halifax Paving. It was just a beautiful office right there, you know, near the Hall Road area. Beautiful new office. It was a wonderful, wonderful celebration, wonderful for the family. We had, I don't want to steal your thunder, Commissioner, I mean Mayor, Deputy Mayor Bryley, but there was a fundraiser for Officer Bicasa, and I know your organization sponsored that or did a lot to sponsor, so I'm going to let you talk about that. And we just had Art in the Park last Sunday, last Saturday and Sunday. It was absolutely beautiful. Some of the artists, I found a painting that I wanted so bad. It was a little out of my price range. I was so disappointed, I tried to talk them down, but it just didn't work. But, but it was really a great, great two days of that. And I'm also proud to say I went to the native plant sale at the EDC, and I bought Black Eyed Susans, I bought a, I bought some stoppers, and I bought a long, a long-leaf pine tree that I'm going to plant, so I'm doing that. And my last comment that I wanted to share with you is first-step shelter news. So this is just something wonderful that just happened. In 2020, a man named Jeff, no last names are going to be said, came to the shelter, and he had not been sober for decades. So today, his mother and stepfather came to the shelter and are leaving a sizable donation to the shelter in their will because their son has, has not had a drink since he's came in the shelter. He's not had any drugs, no alcohol, and they feel the shelter made an incredible and miraculous difference in their son's life. So they made this huge donation, and so to this day, this young man is out of his own, has a nice job somewhere, and he's sober, so just wanted to share that good news that the shelter is working. And thank you all for listening. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Persis, and Deputy Mayor Bryley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Chief Godfrey, we want to wish you and Corporal Summerlot and all of our folks going up to Washington DC a very safe and successful Police Unity Tour. We're so proud of you, and thank you for what you're doing. As Commissioner Persis said, we did have a great luncheon at the Casements Guild, with the Casements Guild over at Rockefeller Gardens. That's such a great organization that keeps our, our treasure of the casements going, and just a great group of volunteers. You start hearing the, the years of service of some of those folks, and you're like, wow. I mean, just the, the time they give to the, to the community and to the casements is, you really can't put a price on that. We really thank them, and we're proud of them, and we're proud of what they do for the casements. The tee-off celebration for the Mayor's Golf Tournament, Oceanside, was great to see Mayor Fred in town, have, to have Mayor Persis there, have what I call Flat Carl because Carl had a, a school board meeting he had to be at, too, so we had a stand-up, a stand-in for Carl. And of course, our mayor. That was a great, great event. I did speak to Bill Partington II. Some of you may know him as Bill Partington Senior, but Mr. Partington, we actually had a little chat last night at the Ormond Yacht Club, and I would ask this commission to maybe submit a letter of support to the 11 to save 2024 designation by the Florida Trust for Historic Preservation on behalf of the commission for, to preserve Chief Tomoke up in Tomoka State Park. That's just, you know, a statue that Fred Danemarsh built many, many years ago, and, you know, it's been in disrepair for so long, so many years, that we've lost so much of it. But it would be great if we could get some sort of grant to, to save, you know, and maybe even restore that statue to what, to what it used to be, to its former glory. So we can discuss that later, Mr. Mayor, maybe in another, on another agenda, or, or now.
If the commission is on board with that, and Joyce?
I always thought that was a great idea, but there's some, and I'm not trying to be negative, but I remember at one of the Regrow the Loop meetings, and maybe Bill Senior can even address it, I'm not sure, but David Jones, who is a Tomoka State Park person, talked about Chief Tomoke specifically at our last meeting, and was saying something about it was going to come down, and they had another plan for it, and they were going to do something in, in lieu of the big statue. And I don't have, I tried to get him to under, today, so I could understand the whole issue. So yes, I think I would love to preserve it, but I don't know if you know any of the other history from Tomoka State Park, what they were talking about at our Regrow the Loop meeting. Are you aware, familiar with what they were planning?
I'm not familiar with what they're planning. Prior to the current administration locally, the park itself is severely under...
Severely underfunded. They have a lot of needs, and, and so that statue is not on their list of needs.
Right.
So this would be an effort outside of their, the state's efforts, and, and maybe if, if we could get some grants and some other attention to the matter, we might be able to get them on board with, with some kind of a preservation project.
So, and, and they had talked about how they had looked at it to try to preserve it, but it was not preservable. Now, I'm just saying what I heard. I have absolutely no data to support it, so I would like to sign on with that letter, but I also think we need to just investigate a little bit more about what Tomoka State Park was mentioning and what their plan was. I just feel like there's a missing piece of information, and I may be totally wrong, but I'm, it was, because I was surprised that we weren't, they weren't going to preserve it, and it looks like they've made an effort to do something else in, in lieu of. So I, I don't know, and I'm not trying to put it down, I'm just trying to understand. That's all.
And what's funny is, I mean, to your point, you're absolutely right. They said 10 years ago it wasn't salvageable, but yet it's still standing, so.
Right. So I think we just need to get a little more information, and I'd be all on board. I'm all about preserving what we can.
Sure.
Don't get me wrong.
No, no.
But I would like a little more information first, anyway.
Is there, and, and I'm sorry, Mr. White, is there a deadline for that, for that grant application?
The nomination for the designation as one of the 11 to save 24 ends on May 15.
Of course.
There's no funds that are available, it's just state recognition of what exists, and what was there, and why it was there.
Sure.
And the fact that it needs to be, it's important to bring attention to the fact that it succeeded.
To make it possible for some funding, maybe. Okay.
None, none, highest any particular program.
But being in a state park, wouldn't you want their approval, not approval, but their letter of recommendation as well? And that's, I'm just trying to avoid, maybe I'm making it bigger than it needs to be.
Doesn't, is not contingent on the, on the property.
Okay.
There are a lot of properties that have been nominated and designated as one of the 11 to save. It just, it goes through a panel of, of people that look at it and decide whether it would qualify.
Right.
And the nomination is only to get it into the running, and the committee would decide...
So that's not going to hurt anything, just to at least start it, and that'll give us time to, to do whatever we need to do?
I think so.
I'm okay with that.
Joyce, can you come up with an appropriate letter for me to sign?
I set my vote mine already.
Okay. Joyce?
I'm sorry.
Can you?
She's sleeping.
Come up, I, I'm sleeping, too. Come up with an appropriate letter for me to sign?
And you'll sign that?
I'll be happy to, on behalf of the commission, yeah. I think, you know, I've been working on this for seven to ten years, I'm glad to see it finally getting some legs. The park has never wanted it, they don't seem to be interested in the fact that we have a, a strong interest in that. As locals, it's a huge part of our history and our culture. Anybody who's grown up here for the last fifty years has been to see that.
And that's what I didn't know, I didn't know that this was, this was a history of it. I just remember going to the meeting and thinking, oh, that's odd, but I never did any more.
Yep, and so it's a situation where a, a state of Florida employee, who may not even be from around here, doesn't get to tell us what we think is important about our history and our culture. We have to let them know, and probably go over their heads, so they understand, we think this is very important, we want to see this preserved, and then maybe we can actually get somewhere to put it as nicely as I can. So, thank you for bringing that up, Deputy Mayor Bryley.
Absolutely. I did want to, you know, we did have a, last Friday, a fundraiser at the Daytona Beach Area Association of Realtors for Officer Bicasa's family, and, and in memory of him, and I want to, first of all, I want to thank Chief, Chief Bailey, I don't know if Chief Bailey's still here or not, but we had Chief Bailey and, and Deputy Chief Corriere, I had, I contacted Chief Bailey, knowing we want to have a dunk tank there, and, you know, filling a dunk tank with a, with a garden hose is a big, big chore, so they were gracious enough to send a fire truck over to, to fill the dunk tank for us. So I want to thank them for that, I also want to thank Chief Godfrey for, for, you know, Chief Godfrey, Captain, Captain Smith, and Captain Roos, for really getting the department together, getting our, getting our M Rep out there, getting, you know, a lot of just, Captain Smith and Captain Roos sat in the dunk tank, made a lot of money for, for Officer Bicasa's family. I want to thank Joyce for coming, I know she bought a lot of raffle tickets, as well as Susan Persis and Lori Tolland, Commissioner Persis, Commissioner Tolland, thank you for coming. I do want to let you all know that we did raise over five thousand dollars on Friday for Officer Bicasa's family. So, we appreciate that, I know the Bicasa family appreciates that, and our, and our PD appreciates it as, as well. Did want to mention the Special Olympics torch run on Saturday that was very well-attended, the first one I think that we have hosted, is that right, Chief? And Chief Godfrey was the master of seminars, did a fantastic job, several folks here in the, in the room, Kristen Deaton ran in the, in the run, I know Travis's, was it?
My kids did, I did not.
Yeah, the boys ran in, in the run, well, yeah, so, but it was, it was, it was a great, it was a great event, and I'm, I'm very, I'm very proud of Ormond Beach for, for hosting that. Lastly, I'll, I'll just point out that this is Ormond Burger Week, and we've already hit a couple of spots so far, I've, I've hit Piranhas and the steer-in, and I guess we may hit another couple of them this week, so Ormond Burger Week is also, always a fun event, and encourage everyone to get out and, and enjoy. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll say goodnight, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Commissioner Tolland?
All right. Thank you so much. First of all, I just want to congratulate Ike Leary, our, our ambassador, goodwill ambassador, you know, he does do a fabulous job for us at the docks, and Alan Burton and the Kiwanis Reads Group, sharing the joy of reading to our community, they really had some, some impressive stats there. Also, the winners of, all the winners of the Mayor's Fitness Challenge, it was pretty cool to see a lot of, a lot of people up there, and Commissioner Sargent, I'm very proud of you, I, I think that's very cool. Also, I want to wish all the officers that are participating in the unity tour, good luck, and we'll keep you all in my prayers as you honor all of the fallen. Little mini-report from Main Street is, and I'll try not to be redundant from you all, Taste of Ormond is upcoming on May nineteenth, they did have success, a successful Celtic Festival, really proud of the outbranch, the art committee out of Main Street, they've, they've really worked hard, kudos to Judy Stein, who really has done a great job getting everybody on board, and thank you, Joyce, for offering to pay for two, sponsor two of the statues with the city, I'm really excited about that as well. Scenic Loop has met, and they have still keep providing their educational series, they just did a walk and talk, the Regrow the Loop is having their final partner meeting, and they are going to have, they're compiling all their stats of the success of the program, all their objective data, and will be presenting to Volusia County Council on June eighteenth, and of course, they're looking for approval to continue this program and expand it throughout the county. Let's see, you all touched on most of the events that, that have occurred, I, I, the one thing that I do want to mention, though, is the Special Olympics torch run. It really, really warmed my heart to see all the smiles of those athletes and the support of their parents. They're so proud of their children, the children had so much just pure joy from just seeing the vehicles, seeing the officers, and I just real, it just warmed my heart that I, I just couldn't stop smiling that whole day, thinking about that and participating in it. And Randy, thank you so much for that update on the fuel farm, and I'm sure, like everyone up there, we will continue to support our opposition one hundred percent, and I appreciate all the hard work that staff has done keeping that going. And last but not least, I just want you also to be aware that even though this is Burger Week or whatever in Ormond Beach, May is also the Mental Health Awareness Month, and I just want to end as Mental Health Awareness Month, May is a time to raise awareness of and reduce the stigma surrounding behavioral health issues, as well as highlighting the ways how mental illness and addiction can affect all of us, patients, providers, families, and our society at large. So be kind to each other, and everyone have a good night.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Sargent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll read the update that Councilman Ken sent to Joyce tonight. Sorry, Joyce, it, you know, we're, we're very fortunate that we have such a great relationship with Councilman Ken and the county council to address these issues, because here I thought the sidewalk was a dead deal, we weren't going to get it, we were losing something, so I was trying to brainstorm, what could we get, and all I could think of was a shower, I mean, what else down there? I, I didn't know of anything else, and then I was like, you know what, I'm going to call Councilman Ken and just see, where was he on this? Because I, I couldn't understand how he would want residents to walk behind the cars, and then when he told us that, it made sense that he thought it was over that wall, and of course you wouldn't want it there, but if he had, if anyone would have seen these renderings, it would make sense, so he just sent a text, and I normally don't have my phone on, I just turned it on, and, and it popped up, but it said, "I just spoke with the county manager, and he is going to personally drive over to the Seminole Approach tomorrow and see what can be done. He is confident we can work something out, negotiate a win. He does not think it will have to go in front of the county council. Thank you for your help." So that's very positive for us. Joyce, I would like to thank you for contacting the county regarding the dog pilot program, I know I had some residents that started the petition against it, and, and I know that the county stepped up patrols, and I kind of jumped the gun on an email that I received from a resident, and I just told them that, you know, if, if they weren't going to, I'll just briefly summarize it, if they weren't going to enforce the rules that I would ask for the pilot program to be abolished, if you will, or immediately stopped, because I thought if they're not going to force it, but, you know, then you kind of dig into some, some issues, and, and you see pictures, and, and you kind of look at the whole thing, are dogs outside of that area, does, does that define that the pilot program is failing? I don't think so, because dogs have, the more you think about it, dogs have always been illegally on the beach. Pilot program just gives a designated spot for our residents to take their animals, and I kind of jumped the gun on it, and, and then Councilman Ken kind of told me, he said, well, you know, Travis, once they say it's a service dog, we can't do anything about it. So of course, when people hear that, that they're going to start using that, and I do think that the pilot program is working, as Councilman Ken said, with the statistics, it shows, hopefully, that the sheriffs and the beach patrol can, the people that are outside of that area violating it can, they can be advised that they're illegally outside the zone and need to do something. But I also asked this resident who, who started the petition, I said, "Have you been reporting these pictures that I keep receiving?" Not one of them has been reported to the phone number that is three eight six six seven six four one six zero, which rings to the lifeguard station at Cardinal, and that they dispatch a officer out from that location to go find the, the person that's in violation. So I think it's very important, if, if you're going to complain about something, you need to also be reporting it properly, otherwise you don't have proper data on whether you can really say the pilot program is failing, which clearly we, we can't say that. So that's all I'll say with that, and I'm very appreciative of Councilman Ken's leadership on that. Looking forward to going to DC this week, last year was my first year going up there, I wasn't sure if my wife would want to go this year, so I didn't even bring it up, because it's Mother's Day weekend, and about a month and a half, two months ago, she was asking me about it, because she had such a great time. So we're, the boys and I and her are flying up on Friday morning, actually, and we'll be there with Commissioner Persis. A great way to spend Mother's Day weekend up there honoring the, the fallen who put on the uniform and protect us. Joe Daniels, good to see you, it's been a while, you've been hiding or something, but good to see you in the crowd. And just would like to say happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there, and with that, I'll say goodnight.
Awesome. Thank you, Commissioner, and you all did such a fantastic job, we are adjourned.